Go ahead and get started, just some housekeeping. Make sure that you're muted. I see some folks are not muted. Please go ahead and do so. Thank you so much. And this is the public hearing portion. Still seeing some people who are not muted. You have Mr. Hall Senior and Ms. Lipnick, if you wouldn't mind muting yourself. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. All right. This public meeting is called to order at 6:31 PM on Monday, February 13th, 2023, virtually via WebEx. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony by community members with respect to the citywide statement of needs for fiscal years 2024, 25. In accordance with Section 204 of the New York City Charter, the mayor has submitted New York City needs for facilities for public review and comment. The purpose of the statement is twofold. Take at the earliest stage possible of the city's future needs for facilities and the specific criteria for selecting their locations and to provide information about the existing distribution of city properties. The statement of needs was made available for review on the Community Board 14 website. The statement of needs describes city facilities that are proposed for closing or expansion in the next two years. Community Board 14 will be submitting comments on these documents no later than February 28th, 2023. Members of the public were asked to pre-register to submit testimony for this hearing. There are no pre-registered speakers. Members of the board can use the raise hand icon or ask to speak in the comments in the WebEx screen. District Manager Sean Campbell has reviewed the statement of needs and will highlight plans as they pertain to CD 14. I'd like to introduce District Manager Sean Campbell, who will be going over the statement of needs.
Thank you, Chair Joanne Brown. The statement, I think our response to the statement will be really similar to last year. There isn't anything notable planned for Community District 14 with one exception, and it's a big one. This year, the 70th Police Precinct, New Precinct House, made the pages of the district needs statements. Last year, our comment on the district needs was that it wasn't reflected in the statement. So this year, they caught up and they put it in there. I will, I think the board should ask a question as to why, it says in the citywide statement of needs, that this was first proposed in FY 2024, 25. I think that the history of this request should be reflected in the needs. But it's a win, so we'll take it. It's not only in the pages, the Brooklyn pages, but it's actually mentioned on Page 3 in the executive summary. So it's in there for real. And as far as anything else proposed for the district, there's nothing, even looking at what's out there as a need for which a location has not been identified. When I looked at the specs for what they need, proximity to a highway or vast amounts of space for parking or manufacturing district and that sort of thing, it doesn't look like there's anything suitable in this district for outstanding needs not yet located. But as we tend to do, our response should be to just ask the city to give us a early heads up if they do identify a location within the district for anything outstanding. And then just acknowledge that the precinct is there. And ask for an update on the locations they have considered for the precinct because we have brought spots to their attention and all of those proposed sites have been rejected. It might be the 72,214 square feet plus 90 parking spots that they're looking for for a new precinct house, but I think we should ask that they be more accountable on those details. And I think that's all I have to say about my observations on it.
Thank you very much. Since we have no pre-registered speakers from the public, we can take questions from the board. Please raise your hand. I'll start with Board Member Steve Cohen.
Thanks. Thank you, Chair Brown. I just had one question that popped up regarding the 70th precinct. And that is because there's a line in there that the NYPD intends to keep the current space at 154 Lawrence Avenue, even if there is a new location for the precinct. So I'm just curious what the precinct intends, would intend to do with that location in the event that they get a new precinct? And if they're, if they're set on that, that they don't want to relinquish that space?
My sense of that from previous conversations, but I'll check. I think it's a good question and make sure that they're on record with that. Is that because this is a two-year outlook, they wouldn't relinquish that space? There wouldn't be a change in the use of this space in the timeframe that the SON is reflective of. They would maintain occupancy there up until the point that it was, that there's a new spot. So I mean, I can ask about long-term plans to, keeping that space. It doesn't necessarily make sense unless they were going to use it for something not precinct-specific. But I'll ask the question. I'll put it in the notes to ask.
Thank you very much for that question. We do have a call-in user who shall mute themselves if you wouldn't mind. The 718 number ending in 92. Thanks. Moving on to the next question from Board Member Carl Henry Cesar. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Brown. Good evening, folks. So yeah, so Sean, my question for the statement of needs is like way in the back in the Appendix C when they said summary of department needs. They didn't have anything listed for CD 14. They said that table basically was already approved in June of 2019, but it said that they have been seeking sites, you know, during the 23 fiscal year in anticipation of the next two years. And so my question is, to your knowledge, have you heard of anything proposed for CD 14? Even though, you know, Appendix C shows that there is nothing listed? That's it.
Carl, do you mean specifically for the precinct or do you mean all other facilities?
I mean schools. Like, I mean, schools, yeah. Like Page 218 has Appendix C, and they basically list like proposed, like school sites. And there's nothing listed for CD 14. And they say, hey, like, we do a five-year plan and this table basically was approved in June of 2019. But they do have a sentence that says they've been looking at sites in fiscal year 23. So I'm wondering, have you heard anything through the grapevine about stuff that may or may not come in, even though that table in the appendix may not reflect it?
No, all I know is that this is still considered by the Department of Education as a district in need of seats. And as far as specific locations, I'm not familiar with any place that has been reviewed for a new school site, either for build or leasing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that question. Next will be, yeah, go ahead.
But we can certainly ask for an update on recently reviewed potential locations for school seats.
Very good. Next question will be from Board Member Corazon Belliante.
Thank you, Chair Brown. I had wondered, and I wasn't sure if I had missed it, when they mention things like relocation of certain departments, do we find out in the statement of needs in the body of it where they moved it? Because I was trying to find out. Something that stood out was that they were talking about relocating the Department of Probation in the Brownsville neighborhood, that Neon Network. And because they offer services to neighborhood, and I just wondered, where are they relocating it to? Do they talk about that or like how that process happens?
It would be in the needs. If they had a new location, they would show that in the needs. So both of the, both the relinquishment is part of the needs and the new location is part of the needs. I don't, because that's out of this district, I might not have focused on it. I could take a closer look and get back to you, but I don't know that it would be a question for this board because it's not, it's not within the district.
I'll dig again, but thank you.
I will too, Corazon. I'll get back to you if I, when I find it.
Thank you very much for that question. Any other hands from board members? All right, seeing none. We should come to a consensus on the comments that will be submitted. And District Manager Sean Campbell, please add if I miss anything. So first, we will be recognizing that the precinct has been, in fact, included in the document. We're asking for a heads up early on if there will be any additional sites for facilities in the district. We're going to find out whether or not beyond the building of a new precinct house, if, how and if the city will maintain the Lawrence Avenue structure. And with regards to the appendix on proposed school sites, we'll be asking for updates on future DOE projects.
And I would add, we'll also ask for an update on recently reviewed sites by NYPD Capital that were rejected, apparently rejected because they're not in here.
Okay, I see Elaine here from Joe Dweck, and then we'll go ahead and motion on these items.
No, it was just about what Sean had said about the rejected spots. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. So those are the six items that we'll be commenting on. Are there any objection from board members on those six items that District Manager Sean Campbell will include in her response? Okay, Carl Henry Cesar, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I apologize. My audio like just glitched at that moment. Could you just repeat those six items? I'm not saying I have an objection. I'm just saying, could you repeat those six items, please? That's it.
No problem. I'll do my best. District Manager Sean Campbell will recognize that the site search and the need for a new precinct house was included in the statement that we would like an update on any new facilities that will come about, the, what will happen with the Lawrence Avenue location after new precinct site is built? The, ask for on any DOE projects that include school sites. Sean included that I didn't write down. If you could just mention that again, Sean.
Yeah, your audio went out a little bit. You mean just the review of recently reviewed locations and why they were rejected?
Yes, yes. Rejected sites. I'm writing it down. So those are the six items. Okay. Joe Dweck, you have your hand up again? Go ahead. You're muted, Joe.
Now? Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. I wanted to say, Sean and Joanne, when we communicate, you had mentioned, Sean, about the 42,000 square foot and change that they require. If we can put a notation that we're so woefully under that now, that maybe they could ameliorate that if they can't get 42,000 square feet, whatever it might be. Am I, I'm not stating it properly, but do you?
I hear you, Joe, but maybe if, maybe we should. I'll see how they set that criteria and get back to you on that. I mean, maybe if we know that they rejected all sites because it only had 72,210 square feet or something silly like that. But I'm a little bit loathe to ask for less, especially if there's labor and other Department of Building and other public safety accommodations that they need to fit into this space. So I can do a little bit digging and we can figure that out. Maybe outside of this response to the letter, maybe to NYPD Capital or something like that. I don't know. I yield to the board, but I'm reluctant to ask the city to do less for this 35-year pending request than what they're supposed to do.
It's just that we all know that I don't think we have a 72,000 square foot spot. And that in lieu of not having anything, I want to have something that's better. That's all. I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Glenn Mullen, you have your hand up?
Thank you. Yes, I tend to agree with Joe. I think that what they've done is come up with an ideal scenario precinct house that doesn't and probably won't ever exist in our district. So it's a nice way of addressing it and saying, look, we're paying some attention, but we don't ever have to actually fund this. So as far as I'm concerned, anything that's better than what we have now is a good choice and could or should be moved forward on. That's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Plasker, you have your hand up, board member?
The property that I had mentioned.
I'm sorry, Mr. Plasker. We're having a hard time hearing you. Can you repeat?
Yes, I said there's I had mentioned one was available, but apparently has been turned down. And I believe that it was quite a large property. And I'm not sure, I don't remember whether it was 72,000 square feet or not, but I believe it was darn close, if I'm not mistaken. Sean would know because I gave her the details.
Right, Steve. That's why we're asking them to give us a review of all of the considered locations and the reasons for their rejection. And hearing Glenn and Dwayne, how about, is the board comfortable just with the, with maybe a softer touch, asking NYPD Capitals to review those standards to make sure that, that there might be something close to those parameters that would still be adequate? Or, you know, I'll get the wording together better, but just ask for a review of the standards.
Right, and when, if we get a review of the standards, we can always comment on those locations again and advocate for them with regards to what else is available in the district.
And I'll ask the CEO of NYPD Capital and NYPD Facilities, who has come before the committee, before the board before to talk about this project, I can ask them to come back to a Community Safety Committee meeting and talk in greater detail about what the requirements are and why they are that and for a status update.
Thank you very much. All right, so getting back to those six items that we discussed and the elaboration on why the sites were rejected, do I have any objections to these items being part of our comment letter with regard to this need statement? Seeing none, do I have any board members that wish to abstain from voting? And is anyone ineligible to vote? Seeing none, then those are the comments that we will be preparing for this statement of needs for city facilities for the fiscal year of 2024, 2025. I think everyone, go ahead, District Manager.
No, you can conclude. I'll add this after.
I was going to adjourn the public hearing, so please go ahead.
I just wanted to add that because it's outside of the scope of this letter, but I will be getting out and dusting off our annual or biannual letter that we send to NYPD and our elected officials to ask for advocacy to move this project forward. I will add that in the past couple of weeks, the precinct lost heat. They lost heat for about four or five days on one of those cold weeks a couple of weeks back. Their carbon monoxide alarm went out and they had to vacate and they had another flood in the basement. So there's also a concern about investment in the current site that's beginning to approach capital investments while they're dragging their feet on finding a new location. Not that they can't, I mean, so anyway, we'll bring up the state of disrepair at the precinct and ask for some elected official push on moving this forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Sounds great. All right, everyone. I want to thank everyone who attended and commented during this public hearing. This public hearing is closed at 6:50 PM and we will re-adjourn in 10 minutes sharp, 7 o'clock, for our general board meeting. See you then. Thank you.
I do it really. No, it's okay. You're getting good if you eat beans, you get good.
Glenn, anybody there?
I'm here.
Hi, how is everybody?
We're here.
I just want to tell you an interesting story. Hi, baby. I wanted to tell you a story that I was in the 32 in Harlem about a year and a half ago. Had some business up there. And right after that is when the two cops got killed, got murdered up there. So I've been keeping in touch with the 32 for the past year or so. In fact, I was there about a month ago for a walkout when somebody retired. I've been keeping in touch with them. Trying to do a metal date. I'm sorry. So then, the 66, of course, with the murder of the police officer, indeed, this last week, I was at the hospital.
You see, we're dead. You lost a mother and a father. I might say, parents are never old.
Can you hear me? Folks? Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I was saying that I had, I was at the 66 and bringing them lunch last week. When I was there, the guys from the 32 show up at the 66, uninvited and unannounced. Unbelievable. About 15 of them show up and the captain from the 32 says, I'm here to tell you what to expect because we lost two cops. And let me tell you that you have to keep in touch with the family of the deceased, that they're not going to open up to you now, but within the next few months, you're going to have an avenue to help people. And you have to keep in touch with their families. And he said, you're all crying now, but you're going to be depressed. And it's natural. And you have to lean on each other. It was such a beautiful, beautiful message that he had for the Brooklyn precinct, that he came all the way from Harlem to communicate. It was just a beautiful moment. I just have to share it with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Joe.
Very important.
Some House Republicans really love that they don't support Ukraine.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing, Joe.
Painful stuff.
I don't share at 7 PM.
Like, it literally just became 7 PM.
Hey.
I tease.
7 o'clock's work well.
Thanks. I couldn't do this without you, my friend. All right, and we have quorum, so let's rock and roll, friends. It is now 7 o'clock. This meeting of Brooklyn Community Board 14 is called to order. And just a little housekeeping. I have some people who are not muted. Thank you. This meeting of Brooklyn Community Board 14 is called to order on Monday, February 13th, at 7:00 P.M. under the applicable statutes of New York State, the Charter of New York City, the board's bylaws, and Robert's Rules of Order. The board's policy is to encourage detailed public discussion of matters before the board at our committee meetings and at public hearings. Consequently, except by board members, there will be no public discussion at our regular monthly meeting of matters about which a public hearing or a committee meeting was held. Specific service delivery requests or complaints should be brought to the attention of the district office, district office's staff by calling the board office during regular business hours or by visiting our website anytime. Other matters of civic interest may be brought before the board during our scheduled public comment period, which will begin tonight after all of the business on the board's monthly meeting agenda has been concluded. No partisan political appeals or advertising of for-profit enterprises will be heard. Persons wishing to speak during the public comment period were asked to pre-register. This evening, we will be taking attendance from our participant list. And moving the agenda forward to the minutes, have we received any changes to the minutes via email?
No, we have not.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the minutes of the January 2023 General Board Meeting from the floor? Carl Henry Cesar, you have your hand up, or do you have changes?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do have a change. I forgot to email it. But basically, in Section 5(c) for the topical committees part, there's just a sentence where my name is misspelled. And so when my full name is written, it's spelled correctly. But when it just says Mr. Cesar, it says Mr. Caesar instead of Cesar. That's my only suggestion. That's it.
I will both offer my apology, because that's my typo, and I will correct it. Sorry, Carl. It's not like I haven't known you for a minute. Sorry about that.
That's all right. That's it.
Thank you very much for that correction. Any additional changes from the floor? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt the minutes with the change requested by board member Carl Henry Cesar?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Okay, we'll vote in the reverse. Are there any objections to the modified minutes? Seeing none, does anyone wish to abstain? Seeing none, and no one should be ineligible to vote. So the motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to District Manager report, District Manager Sean Campbell. The floor is yours.
Thank you. You're all going to hear more about this later in the meeting, but I just want to quickly thank members of the board who participated in a really fun and valuable, I thought, Human Service Committee-led 11th Annual Nonprofit Roundtable last Thursday, especially to our Human Service co-chairs, Nina Sabger and Joel Siegel, our Chair Joanne Brown, members of the board who came to assist the event, Dwayne Joseph, Carl Henry Cesar, Eric Ost, and Barton Prasant for stopping in. And then those board members who came with more than one hat on, board members who are also representing the other good work they do in the community, such as Florencia Changajeda, Baza Ruhi, and Corazon Valiente. And of course, always have to thank Wayne Rosenfeld for hosting us at East Midwood Jewish Center. It was a great event. I love that event, and it just gives me so much hope and faith in our community and the fact that it's great and can be ever better. I also, last week, the new commanding officer of Patrol Brooklyn Borough South, Chief McAvoy, gathered district managers from Brooklyn South to introduce himself and to hear from us. And we enjoyed that meeting, and I made it very clear that while I appreciate Brooklyn South, we tend to not have much use for them because we have such good rapport with our own police precinct. But he seems delightful and hardworking and dedicated to be in a good CO of Brooklyn South and look forward to working with him and his team as needed. I also, also, Uma Park had an onsite gathering of public input for their redesign. And so we went and dropped by to thank them for being on the ground to reach out. And our own Anya Hoyer was there, working for Partnership for Parks. So it was a nice reunion and a great spot for her. Sorry, my notes are really messy. I do want to say, because I've announced before, and try to get the frustration out of my voice before I go on, I have announced before that the Kennelworth Shelter Community Advisory Board would be meeting. I think I announced in December it'd be January. Perhaps they said in January it'd be this month. It was scheduled for today, and it's been postponed again. That is a community advisory board that was supposed to begin when the shelter opened in the spring. So I'll keep pushing for that cab to finally come together. And we'll keep you all posted, and hopefully, the next time, what I say will come true. I also just wanted to quickly mention that I participated in a New York State Office of Cannabis Management update. And we will be bringing that entity to the board. There's so much information and so many moving parts. And so I will try to get them here really soon. Obviously, we don't have anything that is permitted in this district yet. And hopefully, we don't get as far behind as other parts of our city. But we will be bringing them to you. In the meantime, if anybody has really urgent questions, I can do my best. If you want to contact me during business hours to catch you up on the bit that I do know so far. And I think I'll leave it for there, for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. I'd like to recognize elected officials and those representing them at this time, in no particular order, starting with Councilmember Farrah Lewis. We have Sabrina Juist here. Welcome, newcomer from Senators Eleanor Myrie's office, P. Edwards. I'd like to welcome Representative from Congresswoman Yvette Clark's office, Ellie Slavin. We have Chair Emeritus, Community Board 14 Chair Emeritus, Alvin Burke here. We have the President of the 70th Precinct Community Council, Ed Powell. He asked me to make a quick announcement that the February meeting of the 70th Precinct Community Council will be on February 22nd at 7:30 P.M. at Adapt Community Network, which is across the street from the precinct. And want to recognize that Detective Scott Nozzi from the 70th Precinct Community Affairs is here. And also, the Commanding Officer Deputy Inspector Bruce Seperano. Deputy Inspector Bruce Seperano, would you like to address the assembly?
Hi, how's everybody doing? Good evening. Yeah, I just wanted to speak real fast. We're just spiking right now in regards to crime. We're spiking about 33% in grand larcenies. Our traditional car breaks are occurring. Same exact demo, you know, people leaving their valuables in their cars and a lot. Same child trafficking issue that we've seen last year alone Flappershaw Church. But there's one troubling uptick that we're starting to see, not just in the 70, but in a borough and also citywide. It's mailbox phishing. It's, it seemed like it stopped for a while, but it started all over again. People are mailing their checks to certain bills in their household to mailboxes along Flappershaw Avenue, Church Avenue, New Kirk. And we still have individuals, I think they're organized theft rings, that are phishing mail out of these mailboxes, and they're washing the checks, changing the number, changing the dollar amount and cashing it. And the people are losing a lot of money due to these thefts. There are investigations underway, but the best advice right now I can give you, Postal Service is doing joint investigation without all the detective bureaus, is try not to mail any checks in public mailboxes. I hate to say that. If you have to mail any type of checks for bills, if you could just hand-deliver it to your local post office, at least at this time until we get a handle on this. Because we're seeing, just last week alone, the 70th Precinct had about eight of these, just in one week alone. So it's a troubling trend that I'm seeing, the borough's seeing it as well, so is the city. If anybody has any questions in regards to that, or even some advice, how we could, you know, handle on this, I'm all ears. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. We very much appreciate it. Additional people I'd like to recognize, we have from Comptroller Brad Lander's office, Pinkus Hyken. We have from Borough President Antonio Brinoso, Eileen Mulaney Newman, welcome. I also saw that Police Officer Michael Joseph from Community Affairs 70th Precinct is also here. And last but not least, Emmett Sklar, welcome for the first time from the Office of the Public Advocate. If I've missed you, I'll get to you in a little bit when I go through the participant list again. So moving on to the chair's report. Good evening, board members. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the tragic passing of Police Officer Aded Faiz of the 66th Precinct. Services were held at the Maki Masjid Muslim Center on Thursday, February 9. We wish to extend our deepest condolences to his loved ones and to his colleagues from the NYPD Muslim Officers Society. May his soul rest in peace, and we wish his family and friends to regain their strength and the patience to pass through these trials. We wish for, moving on, we wish for many blessings for our community members celebrating Le Lat Al Mirage. And also wishing a very happy Purim to our community members who will be celebrating. I also want to recognize that Captain Kristen Suarez, who was the 70th Precinct Executive Officer, has been assigned to the 72nd Precinct as commanding officer. Our deepest gratitude to her for holding down the command as the search for a new commanding officer for the 70th was ongoing, not once, but twice in less than a year. We wish her best in her new role. P.O. Noemi, sorry, Police Officer Noemi Osorres from Community Affairs will be joining her at the 72nd, and she will be missed. I also want to welcome Captain Jared Badillo, who has been assigned as an executive officer to the 70th Precinct. Community Board 14 looks forward to meeting with you. Moving on to public hearing. We're looking, this is the recommendation for a public hearing that occurred today on February 13th at 6:30 P.M. for the citywide statement of needs for city facilities for fiscal year 2024 and 2025. The purpose of this hearing was to hear public testimony by community members with respect to the citywide statement of needs for fiscal year 2024, 2025. In accordance with Section 204 of the New York City Charter, the mayor has submitted New York City needs for facilities for public review and comment. The purpose of this statement is twofold, to inform the public at the earliest possible stage of the city's future need for facilities and the specific criteria for selecting their locations, and to provide information about existing distribution of city properties. The statement of need was made available for review on the Community Board 14 website. The statement needs describe city facilities that are proposed for closing or expansion in the next two years. Community Board 14 will be submitting comments on these documents no later than February 28th, 2023. The recommendation from board members in attendance of this public hearing was to recommend six comments. And I'm sure District Manager Sean Campbell would jump in if I missed any of them. The first is to acknowledge the 70th Precinct as part of that citywide statement of needs with regards to a facility. And with respect to that, why a report on the rejected sites in the district and why they could not fit the bill for the new facility. Next was for a, the office to update as soon as possible if there will be a change in facility in the district. Next, there was a question regarding what will happen to the Lawrence Avenue precinct once a new precinct is built. It was noted that there would be a maintenance of the property, so we want a clarification on that. Then, there was a request that any proposed school sites or DOE projects be included for updates to Community Board 14 as they come about. So those were the items that were recommended by the board members in attendance. Do I have any questions about these items?
Joan, I will jump in to add that as part of the 70th Precinct questions, we'll also ask for them to substantiate or review the criteria that they are seeking to fill with a new site.
Thank you very much for adding that. All right, is there any questions from board members that were not in attendance regarding the public hearing that we had today? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the comments that will be included in the letter?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second, Dale.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll vote in the reverse. Does anyone object to the comments? Seeing none, does anyone wish to abstain? Seeing none, is anyone ineligible to vote? Thank you, everyone. Those recommendations passed unanimously from the General Board, and they will be included in our letter. District Managers Sean Campbell and Patricia, I have a private message from the representative from Eleanor Myrie's office that he'd like to speak during the public comment period, if you would add him to the list, please. Thank you. All right, moving on. Borough Board Report. On Tuesday, February 7th, a Borough Board meeting was held. The first agenda item was a public hearing in the matter of capital improvements proposed for the Vale in the historic Landmark Prospect Park. The proposed work is adjacent to community districts 6, 9, and 14. Funded by a $40 million grant from former Mayor de Blasio, the Vale consists of 27 acres in the park's northeast corner. The site of restoration will occur in the 10-acre site of the former Rose Garden, the historic children's pool, and surrounding woodlands. The first part of the community outreach occurred in 2017 to 2018, where over 2,000 community members were engaged to generate ideas for the redesign. Community outreach was performed again in 2022. Based on community feedback, the Vale design will include a pavilion with composting, all-gender comfort station, a pollinator garden with a rustic arbor, a natural exploration area for children, a lawn with seating, rehabilitation of the pools and ponds, and rehabilitation of the surrounding woodlands. The Borough Board voted to recommend these projects. The process will now travel to Landmark Preservation Commission for review. The next item on the Borough Board agenda was a presentation from Nancy Miller, Executive Director and CEO of Visions, a nonprofit vision rehabilitation and social service organization. Visions' purpose is to develop and implement individual programs to assist people who are blind and visually impaired of all ages to lead independent and active lives and to educate the public to understand their capabilities and needs. The next item on the agenda was a second review and discussion regarding the Borough Board resolution calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation amending the public officers law to conform to meeting procedures under the corporate laws of New York State. I previously reported out on this item last month. The process of drafting this document is ongoing. The last agenda item was a discussion about the Borough Board's bylaws. A copy of the last known set of bylaws from 1977 was presented. A motion was passed that this document undergo a legal review to determine which sections need to be updated based on the charter revisions that took place after the 1977 bylaws were ratified. Once the legal review is completed by the Borough President's General Counsel, we expect a bylaw committee to be appointed from the Borough Board, and the document will be additionally updated to reflect the current and future needs of the board. Somebody is sharing their screen. And if you could unshare your screen, that would be great because it's probably disrupting everybody's viewing experience. Thank you. Any questions on the Borough Board report? Okay, seeing none. We're still having some issues with members not muting themselves. So if you could check yourself, please.
Hello?
Thank you.
I didn't want to support you during the day because I figured you were at the pool.
Ms. Lipnick, could you mute yourself, please? Thank you. Moving on to a report from the Nominating Committee, the two thousand twenty-three Nominating Committee. Just to shout out to members who were there from Region One, Melissa Minnick. And from Region Two, Corazon Valiente. Region Three, Donald Logan. Region Four, Abe Treff. And the Member-at-Large, Neha.
Vice.
Neha Lepnick. May I ask the Chair, who was appointed by the committee, to provide a report of the nominations, please?
Yes, we came out with a slate of candidates that seem very good. For Chair, Joanne Brown, that's you. For First Vice Chair, Dwayne Joseph. For Second Vice Chair, Stephen Cone. For Third Vice Chair, Joseph Dweck. For Secretary, Hedy Bedell. And the two Members-at-Large, Shahid Khan and Carl Henry Cesar.
Thank you very much for that report, and I do appreciate all of the work that the Nominating Committee put in for this matter. Moving on, I'd like to ask if there are any nominations from the floor. I will go by each position. We'll start with, are there any nominations from the floor for Chair? Seeing none, are there any nominations from the floor for First Vice Chair? Seeing none, any for Second Vice Chair from the floor? Seeing none, Third Vice Chair from the floor? Seeing none, any for Secretary for the floor? Seeing none, any nominations from the floor for Members-at-Large? Those are, that's two positions. Seeing none. My understanding then that the slate that was brought before you by the Nominating Committee will hold, and we will have elections at the March meeting. Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you very much to the Nominating Committee. Moving on. Just a little quick reminder that if you are up for reappointment to submit your Community Board applications. Oh, yes, Ms. Gail Smith. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you, it will be quick. I just wanted to say briefly that it has been an honor and a privilege to serve on CB fourteen's Executive Committee under the leadership of the Honorable Chair, Emeritus Alvin Burke, and most recently, the Honorable Chair Woman, Joanne Brown. The time has come for me to step down to allow new, exciting, and younger, you heard that, younger, and younger leadership together with the inclusion of those with institutional memory of CB fourteen's storied past. I plan to stick around a little longer, God willing. However, I will be sitting side by side with my fellow CB fourteen members in lieu of the dais. Thank you for your support throughout the years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Smith, I am remiss that, because I'm rushing through this meeting, that I did not recognize. But I certainly would have given you, and I'm going to give you tremendous amount of fanfare in March when we hold elections. But Ms. Smith has been an incredible mentor to me throughout this process of being your Chair in more ways than one, and it was completely my honor to serve with her when we sat for the community committees in search for the Seventeenth Precinct commanding officer. So we will celebrate you more, for sure, in March. But you are really one of the most important people that I have met through this process, and thank you. Shawn had her hand up, I'm not sure if she wanted to say something, but you're welcome to.
No, you beat me to it, I'm just making sure Gail knows she's not off the hook for another month.
Okay, I'll I'll just leave it at that, and we'll talk more in March. So again, just a reminder to that the Community Board applications are due. We got noticed today that there are ten members who did not submit their application, and I did note that there is a trend that many of those, some of those ten members are those that were appointed midterm, and they may not have realized that they need to reapply again this year to actually have a two-year tenure. So the application was extended. The new deadline is Thursday, February twenty-third. So if you haven't submitted your application and you intend to serve again, please submit your application. So that ends the Chair's Report. Moving on to topical committees. The first report will be from Youth Services, Education, and Libraries.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Brown, Gail. Congratulations, and yeah, you're not going anywhere, we're gonna see you in March, so I agree with Shawn on that one. So I got a lot to say, and so I'll just go down the line. And so the first thing is a reminder that for high school seniors, the Albert Schanker UFT Scholarship, that deadline is February twenty-eighth. And so just a reminder, if you know any high schoolers, any high school seniors who are thinking of applying to college, then they should Google Albert Schanker UFT Scholarship. That's A-L-B-E-R-T-S-H-A-N-K-E-R, UFT. And then they should be able to use the links from there and then find out if they meet the qualifications for application. But that application is due February twenty-eighth. The next thing I want to bring to people's attention as well is that the Inner City Handball Association, they're gonna have a tournament at the Lincoln Terrace Park. They're doing that on March eighteenth. And so they haven't put up the times yet, but they're gonna be having that tournament at Lincoln Terrace Park on March eighteenth, that's a Saturday. And that's, for people who don't know, I think that's maybe like a ten-minute walk, I think, from the Utica stop. I think the, not the A one, but maybe the, I think the four, one of those out there. And then the next announcement as well, too, is that there's an organization called the First Tech Fund, and they're a nonprofit org that they aim to close the digital divide for low-income students. And so they have an applicant, they have an open application period. That application period ends April first. And so if you Google First Tech Fund NYC, I believe you should find the links to that organization. And for any New York City residing high school students who may be interested, definitely have them check out that link and then look at the information and see if they meet the qualifications for applying. The other thing, too, is the Summer Youth Employment Program, that application is live. The deadline for that application is March twenty-eighth. And that ties everything together just because our Sixteenth Annual Youth Event, that's going to be on Monday, April third. And so we had wanted to do like a week before, but there were some space challenges. And so we are going to be doing Monday, April third. That is when we are going to be having our youth event. So I know there was a lot out there in that announcement, and so I'll keep it at that. So thank you, folks.
Thank you very much, Co-Chair Carl Henry Cesar. Moving on to the Human Services Committee.
So I don't know if Joel can throw in. I realize I don't have the notes with the actual names of presenters, but January nineteenth, we had presentations from Morris Heights Health Services, which now has facilities here in Brooklyn. And they offer a variety of outpatient healthcare services, primary care services. And so if you know of people who are looking for care within the community, that is an option. It's Morris Heights Health Services. They originated in the Bronx, but they now have facilities here in our neighborhood. The other presenter was from the New York City Test and Treat Services. This was originally out of COVID. It was the test and tracking, but they no longer are trying to track where a person became ill from because that seems to be kind of a lost cause at this point. However, it's really, really important for people to know that treatments are available that are very effective in minimizing and decreasing the duration of COVID illness. So if an individual suspects that they are ill, if they're having symptoms or they've been exposed, they should definitely take advantage of the test and treat program. These are run out of mobile units, and I guess you can go online and find out where the closest one is located. They will do the testing there on the spot, and if you are indeed positive for COVID, they can get you treated. I believe, if I recall correctly, Joel, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that they can also test for RSV and flu. So if you're not feeling well, and it turns out not to be COVID, they can let you know if there is something else available so that you can contact your primary care doctor and get treatment for these other illnesses. And then, then the last thing was the recently held on February nine, the the gosh, I'm sorry, I just blanked. The roundtable with the various nonprofits in the community, and it was absolutely wonderful. And thank you, first of all, to our District Manager Shawn Campbell, to our Chair Joanne Brown. And last but not least, and very, very importantly, to the entire CB fourteen staff that pulled it all together. And I hope that a list of all these nonprofits is available for anybody who's interested. There are a lot of services available within the community. Everything from housing issues, healthcare issues, veterans issues, substance abuse, addiction treatment programs, other mental health treatment programs, women's health issues, and and then environmental issues as well. So thank you.
Let's not forget arts.
Yes, the arts. Absolutely.
Thank you, Nina, great job reporting. Just reiterate that it was just a fantastic event last week. And I too thank the staff for putting it all together and actually coming up with roundtables. So that was a big plus. I think the people, I would add, though, the people that participated, the representatives from the various nonprofits, I think they enjoyed it very much. And thanks again to Wayne Rosenfeld, Reese Midwood, for the use of the space there, and to the catering. Everybody had a good time, lunch was provided, so thanks to everybody again. Great, great event.
Thank you very much for the report. I totally agree, it was one of our best formats that we have had, and I really did enjoy myself and met a lot of great service providers in the district. I see Carl Henry Cesar has his hand up, he perhaps has a question for you.
I think you're muted, Carl.
Yes, I was, thank you very much for that, Joel, use the air on my part. Yeah, not a question, just a quick thing, I forgot to mention that we have our Youth Services meeting on February twenty-seventh. So that was the piece that I forgot to mention, so that's it, so thanks, folks.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Carl, you have, okay. Moving on to Community, Environment, Cultural Affairs, and Economic Development Committee.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dwayne Joseph, one of the co-chairs of the Community, Environment, Economic, Cultural Affairs, and Economic Development Committee. I'm here with Barton Person, who is my fellow co-chair tonight. Just quickly, our biggest announcement is that we have a our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February twenty-third at six thirty P.M. via WebEx. We will be inviting back Lauren Elvers Collins from the who's the Executive Director of the Flatbush and Church Avenue Bids. Just to, you know, make sure that there was a public hearing about the merger of the bids. We just wanted to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to weigh in with questions that they may not have been able to ask during the thirty-minute session of the public hearing. We're also gonna be having a report from one of our colleagues here on the Board, Ed Sen, who's gonna wear his hat from the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection around the rules governing the tobacco sales. You all may have noticed, there are a lot of smoke shops opening up in the community and edibles and dispensaries. But as Shawn mentioned during her report, none of them have been licensed. We do not have a licensed dispensary in Community Board fourteen. So Mr. Sen's gonna speak about, you know, what the city's plan is, a plan of action is around that. So we encourage you to join. He's also going to be discussing some of the free tax prep and financial empowerment centers that offered around the city from the New York City Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. So please, if you are an individual looking for tax help or a business looking for tax help, I would encourage you to join that meeting on the twenty-third. Barton, do you have anything else to share? You're muted, Barton. We cannot hear you.
Yeah, unfortunately, Barton's having technical difficulties. All right, I think, I do think you got the crux of it, though. I'll move on to the next committee. Thanks so much for your report. Next committee is Community Safety Committee.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of my co-chair, Hindi Benzel, we haven't got any report. We had no meeting, and due to the, you know, other meetings that needed to be held, it will be announced when we'll be having our meetings, and it will be in the email to the Board members and also on the Board's Community fourteen Brooklyn website. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. Moving on to the Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Chair Brown. So we've got on February twenty-third previously mentioned is the new application and reapplication deadline for CB fourteen. As Dwayne just mentioned, there is the committee meeting for Community Environment that night. And I have one more thing to add to the calendar for everyone who wants to multitask and do multiple different things evening of February twenty-third. You can find that, it's the third item on the CB fourteen website. It's the Brooklyn Bus Network Redesign Briefing for Community Board fourteen. It says that there will be sessions at six thirty and seven thirty. So, you know, conceivably, someone could attend the Community Environment meeting, or at least most of it, and attend the later Brooklyn Bus Network redesign meeting. But there is a link to sign up for the Zoom on the CB fourteen website. So I encourage those of you who, you know, use the local buses or are interested in the proposed redesign and how that might impact your commute or getting around to attend and, you know, your commute or getting around to attend and, you know, find out more information and voice any support or dissatisfaction with any of the proposals. So looking forward to that. And yeah, I will try to hop into the Community Environment meeting as well that night as my co-chair Ed Sen will be presenting, and I'm looking forward to that as well. So thank you.
Thank you for that report and information. Very useful. Housing and Land Use Committee, please.
Hi, thank you. On behalf, I'm Talisha Saintville. And along with Greg Alvarez, who is in attendance tonight, we are the co-chairs of the Housing and Land Use Committee. We had our February meeting on February 1 and where we had a discussion on the Brooklyn Borough President's Comprehensive Plan submission by CB14. So CB14 is seeking input from board members. This report that was submitted to the Brooklyn Borough President's Office is designed to help tie land use to certain health-related outcomes. Chairperson Brown presented the existing conditions report prepared by the RPA and the Brooklyn Borough President's Office, as well as reports on the last Borough Board meeting. There were maps that were shared containing existing conditions reports and having demographic data for all 18 Brooklyn districts. And I urge you to go ahead and check out those maps because they have a lot of good information in them. And all of this information can be useful for all of the committees here, as well as just the board in general to use and will be especially helpful in helping the Housing and Land Use Committee connect to initiatives within the Mayor's City of Yes Initiative. District Manager Campbell submitted all the comments that were presented to the district office, to the Borough Board on Friday, February 3. But all the board members will still have an opportunity to submit comments as the Brooklyn Borough President's Office issues more materials related to the plan. So it's basically, you know, an ongoing thing. So you can always submit comments to the district office. Board members gave consensus to submit comments to the Borough President's Office. And a fellow with our committee, Bill Kooch, gave a brief intro to his work and research on housing in Community Board 14. And as always, if you want to take an hour and view our last committee meeting, it's on our, the CB14 YouTube page. So I encourage you to go ahead and review that if you happen to miss the meeting and come to our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. And, and I want to thank Talisha Saintville and Greg Alvarez and District Manager Shawn Campbell for all the hard work that we put into our response to the, to the existing conditions report from the Borough President's Office. So this concludes reports to topical committees. I'm going to move on to report from ad hoc committees. The first one being the Street Co-Naming Working Group. So on January 31, the Street Co-Naming Working Group met to consider additional criteria to adopt that were adopted by other community boards across the city as additional criteria for street code naming recommendations by city council members who represent CD14. So there was a pre-meeting survey that was sent out to the working group, and those responses shaped the conversation. The following were the working group's recommendations based on, based on the city council's criteria as a baseline criteria. So this would be going above and beyond what the city council already has as their criteria. So the first question from the survey, must prospective honorees have demonstrated extraordinary and consistent commitment directly to Community District 14 or exhibited significant historical or cultural impact? The consensus among the working group members and board members in attendance was to recommend that they demonstrate these, these attributes. The next question was, how long shall be required for the prospective honoree, honoree's consistent community service or impact be considered as criteria? So based on responses to the pre-meeting survey, consensus was that no time limit of service shall be considered as criteria. Next question, shall there be a formal community board application where the applicant will review a checklist and provide requested documentation based on adopted procedures? The consensus among members was to recommend a formal application. Next was that all applications shall be heard equally. The consensus was that all applications will be heard equally. This last item, we, consensus could not be reached. And so I will bring this question to the general board for discussion. Based on a one-block radius of the proposed corner, what percentage of residents shall be needed on a community support petition? So for example, visualize a percentage based on density of the block. A block of 100 residents would require between 50 and 60 signatures. So the working group had two recommendations for discussion here tonight. And that it will be, this is in or. So it will be, would be either 51% or a simple majority of residents in a one-block radius shall appear on a signed petition. Or 40% of residents in a one-block radius shall appear on a signed petition. And a postcard to each household in a one-block radius will be mailed. Just some background on a postcard. The themes that were discussed was the cost of the postcard. Based on my research, with postage and handling and printing, a postcard would be 70 cents for a very nice four-by-six postcard. And the other discussion was, how would the applicant get ahold of addresses of each household? It was stated that the Community Board Office could assist in that process. And if the council member's office, who would be sponsoring the street co-naming, they could also assist if they preferred. So for this particular item that we could not reach consensus on, is there any discussion on the two recommendations? So it would be just 50%, 51% of residents shall appear on a signed petition. Or 40% of the residents would appear on a petition plus a postcard to each household in that one-block radius. Happy to take your questions. Okay, go ahead. Joe Dweck, board member.
There. Thank you, Joanne. I didn't quite understand the second part about the 40% on the postcard. Just the mailing of the postcard, Chairman Brown, would suffice as consent from, from the, from the area without return of that postcard? I'm not understanding.
It's not consent, it's notification. So the goals were that if a good portion of the members of the working group felt that a simple majority or 51% was possibly unattainable, especially in some of the areas that you'd have to enter a dense building and it could be construed as trespassing. Many people who have done petitioning for one thing or another have found it difficult to get into the larger buildings. So it's not consent, it's notification that this process is occurring. So the postcard would, would be providing notification to households in a one-block radius that the street co-naming application was placed with the council, was placed with the community board. And that a public hearing would be occurring at a future date.
And for them to be able to give feedback at that time.
At the public hearing, correct.
Thank you.
Melissa Minnick, board member.
Just out of curiosity, I guess, in the case of the postcards, is there also tracking going on regarding returns and address changes, things like that? To know how many people are getting them and that we have the latest?
So we would be requesting the simplest method of tracking would be, it would be from the US Postal Service. They would certify that they received the bulk mailing. So that the package would be given to the post office and then the applicant would be given a receipt that they did indeed send out this package of cards. It's a little less in, involved than it would be for, let's say, a special permit where we ask for certified, that has a heavy cost. But I think if you read the parameters that the post office provides, it's pretty adequate.
I guess I'm still wondering, though, would we give any report back as to how many were returned or undeliverable, anything like that?
I don't think even the applicant would get a report of how many postcards were returned. Board member Sve Platsker.
Why can't the, the card come back to the board and have the board make a consensus of what has been suggested from those people? Rather than sending it back to, to back to the applicant, to come straight to the board and the board should be able to figure that out.
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. The postcard would go only one way. It would be delivered from the applicant to the households in a one-block radius. There would be no return of the postcard. The postcard would have this notification.
I understand that, but as, as wonderful as our mail system is in today's day and age, unfortunately, there are many pieces of mail, I can tell you personally, that have been delivered to other addresses. And so therefore, when someone says to me, well, you know, I sent you a piece of mail, very nicely sent it to me, but I never received it. And that would be a very valid situation, that we would not know what's really going on.
Understood. So it sounds to me, then, you're more in favor of 51% of the households in the area being petitioned.
Well, at least you have something in writing from the individual.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to try to gauge where the board is with these two options. So I guess I will start with soliciting a motion. Does anyone wish to motion that 51% of residents in a one-block radius shall appear on a signed petition? Okay, so it's motioned by Sve Platsker, by Henrys. Does anyone?
Seconded by Joe Dweck.
Okay, seconded by Joe Dweck. Thank you. So I'm going to ask for a raise of hands in objection to 50, a simple majority or 51% of a one-block radius shall appear in a signed petition. So raise your hand if you object to this. So I have one, two, just please keep your hands up. Three, four, five, six. I have six objections to the first motion. Seven. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Please put your hand down. Very good. All right. Does anyone wish to abstain? I don't really think that we should do extensions on this matter so that we can try to gauge a real view. All right. So on the second recommendation, 40% of residents in a one-block radius shall appear on a signed petition and a postcard to each household in a one-block radius. Do I have a motion for this item?
Motion, Dwayne.
Okay, seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Thank you. Seconded by Yefram and Corazon Valiente. All right. So we will vote, those who object, please raise your hand and leave it. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I have nine, 10, 10 objections to this measure. Okay, thank you, everyone. You can, oh, well, it just seems that everyone, yes. So we have 10 objections to this measure. All right. So based on that, the first recommendation, 51% of residents in a one-block radius shall appear on a signed petition is the motion that we'll carry. Okay.
Joanne?
Yes.
Can I ask that, I'm going to guess that even when this carries, nothing is set in stone and we could certainly revisit this in the future if we find that it's unworkable or not, not amenable, right?
Absolutely. This is just a starting point. We will, you know, I think the best thing to do is to get all of this in a resolution and that, you know, vote on that resolution when it's all neat and tidy. And then also remember that, you know, these are criteria that not necessarily, I'm not going to say, I don't know, Shawn has a much better way of saying this, but, you know, each application will be heard on its merits, right? We're just, our goals are that, number one, that the honoree meets the criteria. And then number two, that we have fair, public notice of the matter. I'm going to start with District Manager Shawn Campbell. She had her hand up briefly. I'm not sure if she has something that she wants to add.
No, because you just said it. It's, these are guidelines, not hardcore rules or laws to live and die by.
And Deborah Valentin, board member, you have your hand up.
I'm sorry, that was my mistake.
All right. So we got the hard one out of the way. I just want to go back to the other items that were recommended by the work group and see if we can get those into the draft criteria to start with, okay? So I guess I'll just very quickly read them again and we'll vote on them as a lot, okay? So must the prospective honoree have demonstrated extraordinary inconsistent commitment to Community District 14 or exhibited significant historical or cultural impact? The working group consensus was to recommend this item. For how, how long shall be required for the prospective honoree consistent community service or impact to be considered as criteria? Based on the responses from the pre-meeting survey, the consensus was by the working group, no time limit of service shall be considered as criteria. Shall there be a formal community board application? The consensus was to recommend a formal application. And shall all applications be heard equally? The consensus was that all applications shall be heard equally. Do I have any questions or concerns on that item? Do I have any questions or concerns on that item, or may I ask for a motion? Seeing no hands for questions, do I have a motion to accept the recommendations from the working group on these items?
Motion to accept.
Seconded.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll vote in the reverse order again. If anyone objects to these recommendations, please raise your hand. Seeing none, is anyone ineligible to vote? Seeing none, these guidelines we'll carry, we'll write them up in a formal resolution and we'll present it to the board perhaps by the March meeting. And thanks, that went very smoothly. I really appreciate everyone's commitment to this. Thank you. Right, well. This moves us to the CB14 Flapish African Burial Ground Task Force. Sorry, committee report, please.
Good evening, everyone. Just one thing to report on behalf of myself and my co-chair, Talisha. At the last month's meeting, we had requested from Sean for reach out to the city to find out if the handoff between HPD and Parks had happened. It has, thank you for confirming that, Sean, I appreciate it. So, you know, as of right now, the New York City Parks and Rec Department is in or has purview over the site. And if I recall correctly from our meeting back in October or early November, the next phase will be them preparing for the RF was the RFA, RFP process? Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to recall from memory here. I think first phase is that.
I don't have notes in front of me, I'll defer to your memory and we can confirm and get back if there's anything amiss.
Yeah, so just deferring from my slow brain sometimes, I think that is the next phase is for them to begin the process of an RFP to, or design for the site. So we'll update you if that's different, but that's where we are right now.
If I can chime in, I don't think there will be an RFP that will be issued because it's under Park's purview. So Park is going to be working on the design.
Design?
Well, yes, they'll start the design and public outreach.
Okay.
So it's not going to any other entity as far as we know right now. But, well, again, we'll review the videotape and
Yes. Thanks for that clarification, I was trying to recall from memory, but thank you for that.
And I believe Corazon Valiente has a question for you.
No, it was to chime in about the meeting that happened on October and the timeline that the parks had presented about what their idea was of what they had wanted. And I just wanted to find out if this would be like a section for future reference, if anyone had like a cleanup or something that they were doing to mention it during the ad hoc thing or to never mention it. Only because some people keep asking me, what does the task force do? And I'm like, I don't know, I as a person with you and other people do stuff unofficially, but so, yeah, that's my question, like if.
I can weigh in on that, it's because it's under the purview of the Department of Parks and Recreation, it is their responsibility to maintain the site. And to the extent that that's not happening, that's my attention, you know, in real time, so I can make sure that they have a, they have a crew out there. I've also offered to that department assistance with keeping DSNY. Their lots division involved if need be. But I'm happy to continue this conversation offline and make sure that it's getting the maintenance that it requires and deserves.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. All right, seeing no of the questions for the ad hoc committees, we'll move on to the public session. This brings us to our public comment period. Board members are expected to remain for the public comment period. Because we are meeting remotely, all speakers were asked to preregister via email to the board office. Any member of the public who is not able to register in time can follow up directly with the board and staff who will include appropriate announcements on the CB14 website. Matters of civic interest and announcements of public events are invited. No partisan public appeals or advertising of for-profit enterprises are permitted. Service delivery requests should be brought to the attention of the staff by emailing or during regular business hours. Please let me reinforce that if you have a community concern, it is very likely the matter is a service delivery item. We can do far more to help you address the situation if you contact the board office directly, so we can individualize our attention to the problem at hand. Each speaker will be permitted up to three minutes and may not receive additional time from an additional speaker, from another speaker. The board has an obligation to conduct its business in an orderly manner. Any person preventing the meeting from continuing will be muted and possibly disconnected from the meeting. The intent of the public comment period is to permit the board and the community a chance to hear diverse perspectives on public issues. Accordingly, we ask that groups be represented by a single speaker. It is now 8:06 and District Manager Sean Campbell will be announcing our previously registered speakers at this time.
I am actually going to announce that Community Coordinator Paticio Linder will go ahead and read the names off.
Thank you, Sean. Our first speaker tonight is Anthony Carrion from the Civic Engagement Commission. Anthony?
Yes. Give me one second to the video on as well. There we go. Hi, everybody. Thank you Chair Brown, thank you District Manager Campbell, and thank you to the Executive Committee and Community Board 14 for your time. My name is, apologies, my name is Anthony Carrion. And I am a community engagement specialist with the New York City Civic Engagement Commission. I'm just intending this public comment period just as an introduction. I cover normally the boroughs of Manhattan and the Bronx. EB, my colleague, covers Brooklyn. And we just wanted to introduce the Civic Engagement Commission as well as our program lanes. Which would include Democracy NYC, which is a get out, vote initiative. Would include partnerships and education, Civics 101 workshops, Voting 101 workshops. As well as participatory budgeting, the people's money. And finally, our poll site language assistance program. These are program links we'd like to go into more detail. Yes, Corazon, EB, exactly. Hi, Corazon, nice to see you. These are programs we'd like to delve into more detail, especially with the oncoming May and June elections, which includes not just the races for city council, but also participatory budgeting. So we'd like to organize maybe presentations or workshops with relevant committees with your board ahead of these pivotal elections. And that's really it. That's a very brief introduction to myself and to our agency, so I thank you for your time. And I look forward to circling back with District Manager Campbell and your committees to set these meetings up. So thank you very much and enjoy your evening. Thank you, guys. Oh, last thing, I was a community board member myself for six years, so I very much appreciate what you guys do and the time you devote. Six years, Landmarks Committee Chair, so thank you, guys, sincerely.
Thank you, Anthony. Next we have Catherine Belka from the Department of Sanitation.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me? I've been having some problems with it, okay? Hello, my name is Catherine Belka from the Department of Sanitation. I want to thank the community board for having me. I will only take up three minutes of the time. So I am here just to make an announcement that starting April 1st, the set out time for garbage, so that's trash recycling as well as composting, if your area receives it. I don't think that 14 receives it. So there's two changes that are coming that you can place out your trash and recycling. For residents, it's going to be either after 6:00 PM or after 8:00 PM. 6:00 PM, you can put out your trash only if you have a 55 gallon container, a receptacle, that has a cover, so the cover has to be tightly secured so the rats don't come and start eating all the food. And then for 8 o'clock, if you have black opaque bags, you can place out those 8 o'clock is the earliest. And all your trash must be out before midnight, the evening before your designated collection day. Okay, so that's either 6 o'clock or 8:00 PM, okay? And for businesses, briefly, those, some of us are small business owners perhaps. So there's two options also for placing of the trash to recycling, and if they do receive any curbside composting, one hour before closing the business, so if it's 5 o'clock, that would be one hour before and before. And it also has to be in a secure container. And then 8:00 PM is the same thing for residents as well as businesses, 8:00 PM in black bags on the curbside, okay? So that's 6 o'clock and 8 o'clock is pretty much the main change that we have. I know that 4:00 PM is one of the earliest set out times out of any major city. So we're hoping that this is gonna reduce, you know, people dumping mattresses, that is gonna reduce the rats coming out to feast for the evening. We are doing a lot of canvassing in the coming weeks, there's gonna be flyers that will be mailed out. I'm obviously speaking at the community board meeting, full board meeting tonight, so I will share some information, my email and my phone number. Any questions, any concerns, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. And thank you again for having me. Yes, question?
Yeah, there are a few questions. We'll start with District Manager Sean Campbell.
Hi, thank you for being with us. Could you please clarify what businesses are getting city pickup? Because we mostly have private carding businesses in this district. And if there's still discussions that are going on with businesses that have supers that leave before 6 o'clock?
Okay, so as far as the businesses that do receive DSNY collection, I do not have a list of the community, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, why, why there are business rules when businesses are supposed to have private carding?
Yes, that's exactly what it is, private carding. I never said it was decent, I just said that curbside, we're trying to eliminate all the rats all over.
Okay, all right, so even for private carding, those rules apply?
For private carding, unless they have a loading dock? Unless the business, but that's very specific and it requires a large area.
Okay, got it. That was my misunderstanding or mishearing, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that.
We have three people with questions on this matter, I'm gonna limit it to three people, so Duane, if you could be brief, I'd appreciate it.
At a recent town hall with Councilmember Rita Joseph, there was a representative of sanitation and they said that the bags have to be five mil or better. Like the contractor style thick bags, is that correct? I just wanna get clarification.
Okay, so if you are putting out the bags, they just have to be the regular that we've been using, the black opaque bags? So not the, there's the black bags that are almost see-through? Not those bags. The bag that we've been putting out pretty much is just after 8:00 PM. They don't have to be heavy duty unless you are doing some household repair work yourself. Then they just have to be the black bags that you can, you know, tie up nicely, securely and put out after 8:00 PM.
Thank you. Next question from Nina Saugier.
Hi, good evening. I'm having a little trouble with the volume, so I may have missed part of what you said. Is, are these regulations, are those applicable only to business or those to private homeowners as well?
This is for both, so for private homeowners, I'm gonna repeat again, if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I have to put the phone right up against my ear.
Okay, so homeowners have two options. If you're putting out trash at 6:00 PM, you have to put it in a 55 gallon bin or less that has a secure lid on top. If you wanna put out your trash 8:00 PM, you have to put it in black opaque bags securely tied. Okay, and all the trash has to be out before midnight, before the day of your collection.
So I just need to bring up something. How does this affect those with Saturday pickup? Who are Sabbath observers, because they're not gonna be putting their trash out at least part of the year before 6, you know, they may have to do it before 4:00 PM or 4:30 PM.
Especially in the winter, yes.
Yes.
So we appreciate that, you know, we understand that these rules are different, that it's it's been 4 o'clock for 4:00 PM to put out your trash and recycling for many years. And right now, we're working with the local community religious leaders, just to see how we can understand this better, how we can address the challenges before the November 1st enforcement deadline. So I don't have any language as to, you know, how we're doing this, but we are speaking, we are making, you know, changes and we're trying to accommodate as best as we can, okay?
Get a calendar, thanks.
Okay, thank you. This will be the last question and any additional questions can be forwarded to the office and we can forward them to DSNY. So last question will be Svi Platsker.
Thank you. As far as the bags are concerned, you said black opaque bags, that means the white bags are not gonna be accepted anymore?
The white bags are not what we are supposed to be collecting, to be honest, so it's, these are the rules. It's recycling is the clear bags. And then for regular trash, it's just black opaque bags. White bags are not what we say, is not on the rules to be putting out any trash in white bags. So if they're collected, you're lucky, but they're not supposed to be.
No problem, I use black bags anyway, but there are people that are using whites, I was curious about that. The other, the other thing is to make just another statement on the religious issue. There would have to be some level of accommodation for the Saturday pickups to be able to start putting it out as early as between 3:30 and 4 o'clock during the winter months. It's not negotiable, the religion.
Of course, I understand, absolutely. Please send an email with all these questions, so I can forward it to my directors, so they understand the concern of the community. I would really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I'm taking notes, I'm taking notes and we'll get that forwarded to you.
Thank you very much, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
We can move on to the next person.
The next speaker is Turquah Huskins, but I don't think she's with us. Turquah? Okay, the next speaker is Rocky Vatarcharia from the Brooklyn Public Library.
Hi, good evening. I'm just giving some general updates from the Brooklyn Public Library. The first one is that the Ready Set Kindergarten Program is resuming this month. It's virtually and in-person at participating branches. Families can enjoy stories and activities designed to encourage early learning practice. Each week at the six-session series, families will explore literacy, science and math through music, stories, art and play. Families will receive free materials to continue the learning and fun at home. Visit brooklynpubliclibrary.org backslash kids or your local library for more information on this program. Our multilingual storytimes in our recently relaunched children's legal programs. The second point is registration for spring ESOL classes is open as of February 21st. BPL offers many types of English classes, from beginner classes to specialized classes, resulting in certifications for medical billing, food handling or digital literacy. The registration for spring classes will begin February 21st. Anyone interested in these classes should visit BPL's website and fill out the interest form. If you have questions about our ESOL classes, you can also visit our website. The last item is BPL, is regarding BPL. The last item is BPL, is regarding BPL's outreach services. Working with the city's Action NYC program, libraries provide free immigration, legal screenings, and representation in your language. There is a waitlist for this program, but our staff will refer anyone in need to other partners as well. BPL's compute popular senior debates series is coming back in March. Seniors who would like to join this debate club, which meets virtually and at our central library, can find out more at our website. That is all I have to say at this time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Emmett Sklar from the Public Advocate's Office.
Hey, good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for having me. My name is Emmett Sklar and I'm from the Office of the Public Advocate. I serve as the Brooklyn Borough Advocate. So it's my responsibility to be at Community Board meetings and I, I'm excited to see you all tonight and hopefully in the near future. I just want to emphasize a couple of things. Firstly, today is your last day to update your voter registration. If you wish to vote in a particular primary, it's your last day to change your political affiliation with the Board of Elections. Additionally, we have a couple exciting events coming up, including an Understanding My Mental Health event on Tuesday, February 28th. So in that workshop, they'll discuss some of the history around mental health awareness, examine different ways we can work in community to improve collective mental health. And I encourage you all to go to our website and look at that and our other events while you're there as well. Definitely find our constituent service section because a lot of folks don't know that the Office of the Public Advocate has a really talented and experienced constituent service team that can help you with tenant issues, navigating the public education system, and a whole host of other critical issues. So I'll, I'll leave it there and just also emphasize that if at any time you or an organization that you're a part of wishes to partner with our office, invite us to things, please feel free to reach out and I'm going to leave my contact info in the, in the chat as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmett. The next speaker is Naomi Ritter from Assemblymember Cunningham's Office. Right, the following speaker is Laura Youngstrom on behalf of PS 134 Parents Association. Linier Miley from WISE. David Cooperfer from Passengers United. Shakima Grant from Memorial Medical Care.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Shakima Grant. I'm the Community Programs Manager from Memorial Sloan-Kettering Center. I requested time tonight to briefly share some information about the opening of a new comprehensive cancer care practice in collaboration with New York Cancer and Blood Specialists. The practice is now located at 2236 Nostrand Avenue, which is at the intersection of Flatbush and Nostrand Avenues. Memorial Medical Care PC is a practice of Memorial Sloan-Kettering Cancer Center physicians. Through this unique collaboration with the New York Cancer and Blood Specialists, we hope to deepen our engagement and support the cancer needs of the Brooklyn community. The Memorial Medical Care Physician Practice recently opened January 23rd of this year. The experts who will be, the physicians who will be at this location specialize in these different specialties, not limited to blood cancers, breast health and breast cancer, colon and rectal cancer, GYN cancers, lung cancer, and prostate cancer, and there is a host of many others. For more information, I'm actually going to place the website in the chat. In addition to that, I'm also going to provide my contact information. We're always looking to partner on educational programming for cancer prevention, screening, and care. Lastly, we're actually going to be having a community open house in either April or May, so we hope that we will be able to meet all of you at that open house and other community residents. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. Next is Jeffrey Thomas from Flatbush Streets for People.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Thomas. I'm with, so Flatbush Streets for People is a group of residents who want to see your streets be safer and more effective for everyone, however you're getting around pedestrians, cyclists, bus riders, and drivers. We've been noting how common it is to see trucks around neighborhood doing things that they shouldn't be doing, going outside of truck routes, trucks that are too big for the city, so forth. I think we're all aware in this community district, we've had many instances of people being killed or severely injured by trucks. Most of you know about Keela Santiago, mother of two on her way to work, who was crushed by a truck on Parkside Avenue. The truck was found to have failed to yield, but also it shouldn't have been on Parkside Avenue at all. That's not a truck route. It's not a local truck route. The only reason a truck can be there is to be doing deliveries and it wasn't, definitely wasn't delivering anywhere on that block. There was also a gruesome incident a couple of months ago when a pedestrian was killed by a truck on Caden Avenue and his body was dragged down Caden several blocks. So we know trucks are an important part of the city infrastructure, but there's a particular danger from trucks that are on roads that they shouldn't be on or too big for the city. So yesterday we ran an event called Truck Spotting. We made some bingo cards with various things that you generally shouldn't be seeing on our streets. Walked around in a few groups and I wanted to share some observations. First thing, illegal 53-foot long trucks usually have 53 feet painted on the side. So these are not allowed on New York City streets at all. They're only allowed to be on like three interstate highways to travel through the city. None of those highways are in CB 14. They are not allowed to be off the highways. Companies shouldn't be dispatching 53-foot trailers in the city in the first place. Not only are these large trucks dangerous, they cause noise, road damage, and congestion. They don't even fit in some of the intersections. And we saw these illegal 53-foot trucks constantly even on a Sunday afternoon. We even saw several street park trucks. Some of them were outside of truck routes on Parkside where trucks shouldn't be driving again. So how are they street parked there? I think everyone would agree, this isn't the right way to use our valuable street space. We saw several trucks making left turns on red. Sometimes on the leading pedestrian interval, there's a walk sign before a green light, which is supposed to give enough time for people who really need it to enter the crosswalk and make it so that vehicles have to yield to them.
I, I just want to, I want to clarify two things. So this sort of is morphing into service delivery and we've been very active on 53-foot trucks. So if you just want to take the remaining time to tell us about your action and what you did yesterday, that would be very helpful.
Yes, so yeah, I, we, I'll move on from 53-foot trucks. We saw left turns on red, plastic bollards, plastic humps on the ground, the trucks are running over, guiding turns, trucks running correctly over them, could be have some physical introductory error. One positive thing I want to note, side guards between trucks and front and rear tires prevent people from falling under a truck and getting caught. All the city trucks, all the private trash trucks are supposed to have side guards. As of this year, we did see that's happening. That's great. It'd be really good to extend that to all trucks. I think it's an important safety measure. So that's what we saw. I will put a link to our group on the chat and our social media. We have some photos. And I encourage you to keep, for all of you, to keep an eye out for all these things as you walk around in a neighborhood. So thank you so much for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much for that report.
Next is Venus Cantaberry from the New York City Civilian Complaint Review Board.
Hey, everyone. I hope everyone's having a great Monday. I'm Venus. I'm the new Brooklyn Outreach Coordinator for the New York City Civilian Complaint Review Board. We are an independent agency that investigates, mediates, and prosecutes against police misconduct. We investigate the allegations of excessive force, abuse of authority, discourtesy, and offensive language. You can file a complaint on our website. You can also file a complaint in person or mail your complaint using a complaint form. You can also direct message us on our social medias. We have Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook. And you can also file at your local precinct. Lastly, we just issued out a 2020 George Floyd and Breonna Taylor protest report, so I'll be happy to add that into the chat. And lastly, lastly, I'm open to all collaborations. I oversee Brooklyn, so any collaborations that we can do great work for the Brooklyn community and for the Flatbush community, I'll be more than happy to interact with everyone. I'll leave my info in the chat, but I just want to say, I hope everyone have a great Valentine's Day tomorrow. And if you don't have a Valentine, I'll be your Valentine. But yes, have a great, have a great one, everyone.
Thank you. Next is Irene Mulaney Newman from the Office of the Brooklyn Borough President.
Hi, good evening, CB 14. So nice to be here with you all. Two things, 2/23 is a very big day, apparently. We have our community board applications due, so folks who need to reapply like was meant, that was mentioned before, please do so. Any new applicants, please get your application in by then. Also, it's our Black History Month celebration and we will be doing our second year of Brooklyn is Africa, which is we work in collaboration with the Cultural Museum of African Art and we have amazing, amazing African art that will be shown in our courtroom. Those dates for viewing are going to be 2/24 to 3/3 and we will be including a weekend. So please go to our website, www.brooklyn-usa.org and check it out. And that's all I have for now, but thank you all.
Thank you. The next speaker is Pausan Edwards from the Office of State Senator Eleanor Meir.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. I bring greetings from State Senator Eleanor Meir's office. Just a couple of updates to Dwayne Joseph's cannabis shops question proposal. So the Senate passed a bill S-159 this year. It is a bill to help law enforcement clarify what they can do in terms of enforcing and closing down those illegal shops. And so our ask is that, you know, people who are interested that they write, call the governor and ask her to please sign it into law. It is sitting on her desk, but we're just waiting for her to sign it. And that's Bill S-159. Other updates, we are having our State of the District address on February 26th this year. It's on a Sunday from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. I will put the link in the chat. Actually, I'm putting it in right now. You can RSVP. It is going to be on a Sunday from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at Medgar Evers College. The address is 1650 Bedford Avenue. It will be at in the major auditorium, so you can enter on, I think it's Crown? You can enter on Crown between Bedford and Franklin. It's in the middle of the block. You can enter through there and it will be on Sunday. Sorry?
Okay, and that was just somebody inadvertently unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. We have housing services in our office through the organization CUFF, Churches United for Fair Housing on Wednesdays from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Every Wednesday in our office, so please give our office a call if you have any housing concerns. They're specialized in helping people fill out Housing Connect websites. They super specialize in getting senior housing. They have great success with finding seniors housing. No, S-159 is not in committee anymore. It's actually on the Senate. It's on the, it's on her desk. We were just talking about it on Friday. But thank you for that update. I will let, I will let Senate know to fix that. What else? Oh, if you're new to the district, you probably got one of these with your community on it. So welcome to all of our new CB 14 members who may not have been in the district before. The district lines have changed. As you can see the map back here, it's gotten a lot bigger. And so welcome to every, all of our new constituents. We look forward to meeting you at the State of the District on February 26th. I believe those are all of my updates. I'm sure I'm probably missing one or two because I don't want to go past the three-minute mark. But if you guys have any questions, all of my information is in the chat. Our office is located at 1077 Nostrand Avenue and the corner of Lincoln Road. My contact information is in the chat, so if you have any questions, concerns, any constituent needs, please feel free to reach out. I am the District Director and I handle all of our constituent cases and I manage our district office and community affairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Sabrina Dejus from the Office of Councilmember Farah Lewis.
Good evening. Can I be heard? Good evening. For those who are new to the board or joining this meeting for the first time, my name is Sabrina Dejus. I'm the Constituent Service Leader for Council on the Fair Lewis of Council District 45. And I have a few brief announcements. So as you guys are aware about the bus, the Brooklyn, the Brooklyn Bus Network redesign MT has proposed to all of us. The office has been in constant contact with MT regarding it and we've actually received a few inquiries and a lot of community groups and members have shared their opposition about this project. Some seniors, some senior groups are actually starting a petition in regards to the rerouting of the, some of the bus lines along Flatbush Junction. In addition to, we want the Community Board to be fully aware that our office acknowledges the two horrific acts, events that took place in the last week, including the death of a 19-year-old found in the confines of Community Board 14 and the recent tragedy this morning of a resident who tragically took his own life at Newark Avenue Station or Newark Plaza Station this morning. We are currently in contact with the 19-year-old's family to provide services and support and we'll be working with the 70th precinct to gather more information about the tragedy this morning to be supportive towards that family as well. But for my last announcement to end on a brighter note, we are working in conjunction with Community Citizenship Now to offer TPS services. It's TPS Fridays, actually starting last Friday, February 10th until March 17th. So anyone needed TPS services, feel free to call our office at 718-629-2900 to be added to, to receive an appointment with the Community Citizenship Lawyer to receive these services. And this is not only with our offices, with our office, but with many other elected officials such as Councilmember Joseph, Councilmember Narcisse, and many more. And I can add my, add my information in the chat, so you guys can reach us if you have any questions or concerns. We're located at 1434 Flatbush Avenue, open 9 to 5. And that's it.
Excellent, and that was our last registered speaker for the evening. And just to Mr. Slavin is raising his hands and I will remind all elected officials, that link is on our, on our website for like a month. So if you would please help us manage our time by registering to speak, that would be great. Other, other than that, I'll yield to the chair on letting Mr. Slavin be our last speaker for tonight.
I apologize for that. I'll be 30 seconds. My information is on your line on the chat. We're very busy with immigration, passports, Veterans Affairs, Social Security, IRS. We're at 222 Lennox Road. It's between Rogers and Ostrin. Our number is 718-287-1142. Now, what's very important, I don't want to keep you longer, on our website, which is clark.house.gov, there's a lot of information that's put up there on a daily basis and up and upgraded. So please, those who have the time, look at our website. And with that, I will wish you all a happy Valentine's Day and good night.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Patricia, for announcing all of our public speakers. Much appreciated. And so I guess we will go ahead and start the process of closing out this meeting. First, I just want to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day and today is February 13th, which means it's Galentine's Day. So to all my gal pals here on the board, have a wonderful Galentine's Day. Yes, second is, alright, everyone. Thank you very mu, very much. This meeting is adjourned at 8:39 PM. Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night all.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night, Alvin.
Good night.
This was fun, as usual.
Good night.
Night, John.
Night, Nady.